Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this part of the meeting of the Vayner City Council. It is January 31st, 2024, 6:09 PM. Roll call. Jason is absent. He has not gotten hold of us.
Mike Parsons?
We have a quorum. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Mayor's report. Water system update. So we reached out to the Department of Health to start some initial conversations with them regarding, you know, their procedures for getting the system back and, we want to inquire about various goings on at the state about these rumors we hear about water districts. So we're starting that out. Annexation update. The estimated completion for that annexation process on the various park properties and the Olson properties is during Q1 of this year. Building planning lead. The city hall vacancy. Interviews are underway for the city hall position. We've had some promising candidates thus far, so more to come. Hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have somebody for confirmation. Law enforcement information. There'll be more later on in city business about this, but I wanted to verbally thank Napavine Mayor Sean O'Neill and Chief Brock Mueller, their police chief, for providing us a variety of information. We had a couple of meetings here at city hall. So I just wanted to thank you, thank them for the time that they spent with us. Snow removal. We're investigating different tractor attachment solutions so that the city has the capability of clearing snow on our streets for future events. And unpaid sewer utility accounts. At the next council meeting, you should expect some information regarding different council action options that will be available to you. So we're working on that as well. Any council reports?
I wanted to bring up the southern border issue in Texas. Long story short, there's 26 states governors that are backing Governor Abbott for securing the border. And obviously, the state of Washington is not one of them. And I think that we should do a, it's not a declaration, but a
Proclamation.
proclamation showing our support for the state of Texas. And if all of the cities in the states that are run by the people like Washington, Oregon, California, if all the cities got together and put that out, it would show the support of most of the nation. If that's something we could put together for the next meeting.
Is that something the majority of the council is interested in doing?
I support it. I support what they're trying to do down there. They're just trying to protect the border and follow the laws that have already been established for immigration laws.
Randy, what are your thoughts?
It sounds positive. The only thing I would hesitate about is repercussions from the state. I'm not sure what they would do or how they would react. But I agree, we should do it. But I do bring up the concern about the state punishing us for it.
And there are some things I might worry about, you know, being in opposition with the state over. I don't think this is one of them we probably need to worry about. I don't, I don't think Washington State has made an official position about it. They just haven't done anything. So I don't think the city is going against the state. We're just exercising our opinion.
All right. I mean, as long as we have no repercussions, I'm for it.
That's a good point, Randy.
I have a big concern because I know how they operate.
Okay.
About numbers in Olympia.
Any other council reports?
And May Day planning is going on right now. They're meeting every so often. They have it on their Facebook page, like when they're doing their meetings, but they're meeting for dinner down at the tracks. Doing the planning for the parade and events and stuff like that.
Yeah, and those folks always need help. So if you or anyone else you know wants to be involved in the May Day event and help with that, please get a hold of city hall or someone else on the team so that we can put you in that right direction. So it's a lot of fun. They have a lot of fun doing it.
It is. And what I've noticed, and like as I came back, it's the same few people that, you know, are doing the Lions Club, doing the parks, you know, they're like just turning out and putting their time in. No reward, but their own self-creditation, you know, and seeing smiles on everybody else's face. It's something to be proud of. I'm proud every time I show up and meet with them and stuff. How serious they are and organized and not serious, like serious, serious, but they're like committed.
Are any other council reports? Agenda approval. I don't have any modifications for the agenda.
Make a motion that we approve the city council meeting agenda for January 31st, 2024.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the agenda as written. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ferguson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
I motion approve the city council meeting minutes from January 17th, 2024.
A motion by Mr. Ferguson to approve the city council meeting minutes from January 17th. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Parsons. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
Make a motion that we approve the amended final extended December 2023 at $21,865.37 for a total December 2023 of $1,21,877.38. The end of January 2024 at $6,027.63 for a total for January 2024 of $49,727.67.
A motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the vouchers as written. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ferguson. Discussion? All those in favor of approving vouchers say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We do not have any special reports tonight. Any members of the public have any comments tonight? I saw Joe Notch is, oh, he's deferring Mr. Goff.
Yeah, I have a question on the water. You had said prior in a council meeting that you had stopped the city planner from presenting a letter for the start of our receivership. What happened to that?
So it's true, yeah. So planners are not currently working on the water system action plan. They said it was going to be another $25,000 worth of work, so we paused that momentarily while we have some discussions with Department of Health. One of the things Louis County brought up in our end of the year discussions with the contract extension was there is some talk at the state level to combine water districts. So if you are under a certain population or the water system served less than a certain number, I don't know what it is, a thousand or something like that. They wanted to combine all the water districts into one water district. So Vader wouldn't run its water, you know, Winlock wouldn't run its water, Toledo wouldn't run its water, and they would combine them together into one operating district. And there would be like one operator that ran them all. I mean, it's still initial talks. So that's the discussion and the worry. So the worry is, we go, we spend tens of thousands of dollars to get our water system back just for two years to have it taken away again. So we want to make sure that that, whether that is or isn't going to happen at the state level before we go and waste our time and resources to try to require something that's just going to get taken away from us again.
But we wouldn't get it taken away if we required it. It would be merging these other districts.
Right. Well, it would be taken, it would be taken out of Vader's hands and it would be, there'd be a district that would run it instead of the city. So picture like a fire station, right? This fire, the fire station is its own district with its own taxing authority. You know, the city doesn't run the fire station. The fire station runs the fire station. So the water systems would be some type of district as well where they would be their own self-supporting entities. So Vader wouldn't have its hands in the water anymore.
So you're saying like, because they would take it, or they would, Louis County has to, they would just be giving it to this entity. So why would we want to jump in the middle of it?
Right. So yeah, and so once again, once again, these are just things we've heard. Whether Louis County would be the authority that would get all of these water districts and then they would just run multiple water districts. Or would there be some new entity that would be formed? You know, these are questions that we don't have answers to. The gist of it is though, we wouldn't want to put time and money into it now just for it to be taken away from us in some capacity later on. So these are just questions we want to get answered out. And now with this contract extension, we have time to do that.
We have the two-year extension.
Yeah, and so we can, so we can make the smart decision.
All I'm worried about is if we don't own it, somebody else has it, we're still going to be able to plan growth and everything. Somebody else saying, no, you can't look up, even though we have subdivisions with sewer instructors. So that's, that's the only reason I'm raising the question. We should do something and act as the only entity.
Yeah, that was a good question.
Can I say something about that?
Yeah, Mr. Allison.
I was on the council when they actually took the receivership. That was one of the options at that time. Because development, the Indian out there in airborne areas. Winlock had the sewer system, you know, and so they were trying to get it to combine because none of us towns going to work with a sewer system like Winlock doing, you know, and so on others. But they want a system that they more control it because like everyone's done their different spot, different water. You know, so they were trying to bring that in where they could do it, control the resources so they get less contamination. And then we put a lot of citizens in fighting for it, like, and bigger water source. Because we can pump way more than anybody out of it. And, you know, it's easier shit here because we're higher ground. Winlock was going to have the sewer at that time. And the city would do like the least in the anyways, just one of the options at that time. You know, we're dealing with a lot of places we're going to do that. So, you know, get better resources and dollars. Think about, you know, our sewer system down here, what that costs.
Well, it would have cost us close to $7 million, but we got grants for it.
Yeah, but I mean, that's, that grant plus that's after that one outbreak, the water temporary system and flush. We had to replace that extract. We would never have sewer. It's just too much on a really small town. We had to channel it. It made up there one was just trying to start a quarter. Just makes sense, you know. So it's just that we have to store it, you know, better.
All right. Mr. Notch, you have a comment?
Yes. So on the 29th of January, we had a ribbon cutting for the Chamber of Commerce at the Shell Station, exit 63. They also unveiled their plan for to do Waylock Road Center that's going there. It will be a truck stop. So you can stop over at the gazebo and get the signage. There's also signage back up there for Napavine, Waylock, Toledo, and Vader. That's not permanent. We're still working with Ecuador's county to see if we can get better signage for the whole region. It's there.
Where is that at? Sorry, I was in my, I had my hair in the theater. Where is that located?
That's exit 63, the Shell Station. There's a gazebo there with the info sign.
Yeah.
So there's new signage in there. That's up by the chamber.
Oh, okay.
Also, we have another ribbon cutting set for the 13th of February of 11th block at the Steamboat Valley Espresso in Toledo. It's open for new members. And we're starting to do ribbon cuttings now, so hopefully it'll be on the front page of the paper.
Have some big scissors?
We do.
Oh, right.
It's not a big scissor. It's very sharp.
You said there's going to be a truck stop?
Yes, that Shell Station is going to expand into a 60-truck truck stop, I believe.
Wow. They're going to go back and buy.
There's also, that was discussed at the ribbon cutting in the hotel or somewhere, probably across the street. I'm not sure when. They're still trying to finalize their plans for the travel center. So.
Oh, is that what it's going to be, is a travel center?
Right. They're pushing to the side of mountain. They're having that 60-truck truck stop there. Things are coming slowly.
Who's building it? Is it going to be in a space age?
No, it's the same people that bought the Shell that's existing there.
See, you would notice out here at the freeway, it's most under developed section. I don't have a lot of traffic.
Yeah. Well, that's, that is a big hangup with two lanes, you know, three, especially all the bridges. It's about, it's all in white, all those bridges.
If you count the number of bridges and overpasses, there's like 13 or something. That's a lot of money. All right. Thank you. Any members of, you have members of the public have any comments?
You're building your own.
On what?
On the building ongoings around here. I mean, some of the things that's happening just like these two trailers over here, they're built, I feel, one would stand. No reburdenment, cement, they put trailers on. I mean, just, wow. I think the city was liable if they don't, at least make note.
You're talking about some of the new construction. They're being built to code. I mean, we haven't, we haven't, they, yeah, the ones that you're referencing, they did start a little early and there were some back and forth with our, with our former building permit clerk and back and forth. And we got them, we got them on track with our building official and the inspectors. So it's being, it's being done, it's on the up and up. There's permits and there's applications and the public records and you can, you can ask for them and get a copy if you want.
I want you.
Any other comments? All right. Moving on to city business. Item number one. Council to consider nomination or nominations for vacant city council position one. This term would be through roughly the end of November of next year. Since it's an appointed position, it wouldn't go until the end of the year. November of next year is when our next municipal election happens. So that position will become, would come up for election at that time. Whoever won the November election would take office as soon as that election was certified, roughly right before Thanksgiving. And so that's when whoever is appointed would need to vacate that seat. So it's not quite a two-year position. Are there any nominations, customers? Are there any nominations for the position?
Yeah. I mean, we have a list, right? And we're an application. Do we have the application? Is Randy reviewing?
I'm here. I'd like to see a few more people apply before we make a decision.
Yeah, we have, we have, I believe it's 90 days from the time Ms. Charlton resigned to make the appointment. And so we do, we do have time to wait again, another couple of weeks if council wanted to wait. I believe there are three applications. So at this point, we preinterest parties.
Well. I mean, we don't have much competition here. We don't have people lining up to sign on. I don't expect any more people to sign on. Would like to see. I wish Jason was here.
First, I want to thank all three of the folks that have put their application here or here tonight. So thank you to both Mr. and Mrs. Goff and Mr. Hert for putting your names in. Regardless of what happens, thank you for volunteering to help the city out.
I'd really like to, I'd really like to see how Jason here, remember, nominate someone voting.
Okay.
Say that again?
I said I'd really like to have Jason be here as well, you know?
Yeah, yes, I agree.
I, you know, I'm not sure why he's not. He's either here or online. Do we table this for the next meeting?
We can absolutely, we can absolutely table it to the next meeting. The next meeting is Valentine's Day. So is that the consensus among the council members? Randy, table this. All right. Well, we'll table this for the next meeting. And we'll make sure to let Jason know how much he was missed tonight. All right, moving on to item number two. Council to consider resolution 03-2024 dating Timberland Bank checking account signers. So as you recall, Mr. Daley was nominated slash appointed slash strong-armed into being mayor pro tem for the next two years. The mayor pro tem has signing authority for spending in the city. And so there is a resolution that needs to be, that needs to be approved. That resolution is actually given to the bank as well, and that's what allows them to update the signers.
I reviewed it. A motion that we approve resolution 03-2024.
A motion by Mr. Ferguson to approve resolution 03-2024. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Parsons, who is being removed as a signer, as he's going out as the mayor.
Why did you go there, right?
No.
Thank you for your service, Mr. Parsons.
Do you sign anything in two years?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
Any other discussion on resolution 03-2024? Or none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, city business. Council to discuss law enforcement coverage options. So last year I had reached out to our neighboring cities to see if what they could do as far as offering us law enforcement coverage options besides Louis County. Napavine was really, end of the year, Napavine was really busy. They did get a hold of us recently. And this is why I thank the Napavine mayor and chief for their time. In your packets, there's a kind of a one-page breakout that they, that they prepared for us. And so there were two options that they proposed. One would be if we use Napavine Municipal Court and the costs associated with that. And one, if we stayed with Louis County District Court and the costs associated with that. And these figures assumed at least 20 hours of patrol time a week. They actually have an officer that lives close to Vader, and so they would be patrolling as part of their daily, their daily duties in and out of town. And so we probably would have seen a patrol car every day, that kind of thing. And so the one, and you can see that the totals on this, so from municipal court, it was 105,000. District court, they thought around 95,000. However, this does not take into account one major factor. And that is jail costs. So with our current contract with Louis County, they absorb all jail costs regardless if we have any amount. All right. And it's currently 94, or it will be 9427 per day per inmate. So depending on how lucky you are during the year, you know, if someone went to jail for 100 nights, or, you know, that could be quite a few thousands of dollars. So these prices that they gave us do not include any jail costs. And so if you recall our current contract with Louis County, while only for 12 hours of active, minimum of 12 hours of patrol time a week, and all jail costs, the numbers are almost the same.
Without question mark on the end.
With no question mark on the end regarding jail costs.
And then extended expense.
And so.
And we kind of, we've only, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't want to run over the topic.
No, no, interrupt the monologue at any point.
Then, you know, we had that instance that was just outside the city once, last year, year before last. He was in jail for quite a while.
It happens.
I think he still is in jail. Yeah. So I mean, I'd even, you know, live just a few hundred yards this way. It would be, you know, and we were on this contract, but these day, you know, well, this is not contract. Price.
We'd be having budgeting conversations right now.
Yeah. $100 a day, 30 days.
Yeah. So I mean, the takeaway from this, and this is even what Chief Brock Mueller had said, we're not getting a bad deal from Louis County at all.
No.
I mean, we're really, I mean, this is, we're really, I mean, everyone's charging about the same. You know, this is, this is how much it costs for law enforcement. So there it is.
Oh, gee. Do you have any idea how many, this kind of share a strong duty at any given time?
It's privileged information, I imagine.
Is it? I mean, just.
No, if you're averaging between four and five.
Yeah.
No, there's some days it's more, there's, I mean, and some hours it's less, but for sure for the time. It never goes down below two, but that's just for one hour.
The shift change.
Yeah, exactly, shift change. So.
Like your coverage is like seventy-five miles over.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we're the biggest county on the western side of the state. Geograph, I mean, not talking population, but geographic.
That's a lot to juggle.
A rural area too, most.
You guys just hired another deputy out of Winlock area, right?
You say just, we have somebody on FTO that hopefully will get off FTO that lives just on the five oh fives.
Yeah.
Hopefully he gets off FTO, which is initial training in the next couple of weeks. We have one that graduated from the academy on the thirteenth, and we have two more who are new Vancouver Academy that just started a couple of weeks ago.
Good. You're trying to grow still, bringing some guys in or?
You constantly, just like anywhere else, you have a couple pipeline and somebody else leaves. You're, you're clawing trying to get ahead. You're struggling, this is tip flow.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to present this to council. Napavine did say that if this is something we're interested in or interested in the future, that definitely get ahold of them. The current administration up there is interested in helping out other cities if they can, so.
Do you know how many officers they have?
Six. Five and going to six? No, they're hiring some more. They, he, he said their budget is nine hundred thousand this year at Napavine for the, for the police department. And so they're, they're able to hire, he's able to hire some more folks. Yeah, Mr. Goff?
I don't think that we should abandon trying to get a around.
Yeah.
Everything's sold out that it costs too much, but we never did come with a figure on joining the Toledo Napavine or whatever. And then the court thing, you know, chairing that or whatever, we never did get a complete number on that. So it's all speculation on these numbers that you come up with the court. Saying the jail, we have the paper to jail, but we did report. And I, the reason we dropped it, I guess, because it concerns yearly and the castle getting the budget people here to court or anyway, we dropped it for that reason for Lewis. And I know that we don't want to try and dig up ourselves. I think we should go for the, you know, the buddy system, work this out with them, or even Lewis County. Because they would negotiate the eight, they, they took that amount and said a percentage up and this will forgive you. I assume that you, I heard that somebody offered, you know, we paid on money, we wanted at these twenty like we had, and they said no, that they didn't want.
It's not that they, it's not that they don't want to, it's that they're unable to provide that service with the current manpower they have. I mean, you just heard from Mr. Phrase how few folks they have available at any given time for the county to, to do their, their, their primary work with, with Lewis County, you know, to, for them to take on additional responsibilities in the city to guarantee extra hours in the city would not be very it's not wise on their, on their behalf to, to, to promise something they can't provide, so.
It was a pleasant surprise that they thought, you know, initially, um, sounds like him forward and saying that it was gonna go by eighteen or twenty percent. And then it, it ended up only being about twelve percent.
I think that was a salesmanship right there. Come in really high and then offer you something lower and make you feel like you've got a good deal.
Yeah.
I'll just get.
Yeah, I did ask him. I was like, you're not really doing us any favors here.
No, so.
He's doing what he can though.
So at least, this is, these are some of the best numbers we've, that we've, we've seen and from, and it came from Napavine. So again, thank you to, for Napavine and, and I said, this, these numbers were based on our twenty twenty-three call volume. So it was based on real world Vader numbers, so. Of course. Any other discussion on that for now? Okay, well, that's the end of this city business. Any of the public comment on here again? Any other members of the public have comment again? I think that was probably an accident on my, on my part.
I did have one.
You guys have worked tirelessly on that most of the year. Even though I don't think you're on any of the committees, but we do scout stuff, I mean, we've got a lot of siloxes there. Seem the attention of groups. Both put on their own little shows.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I have a real quick question too about the water. There was a comment made about the county and hookups with the new construction. Has there been an issue with, is there?
No, no, in my discussions, one of the, in the discussions I had with county, you know, one of the things I, I asked them was about hookups. And, and they're still, they think they said they still have seven hundred with the water system.
Oh, okay.
I mean, we could double the size of the city. Well, I mean, that's connections, you know, we only have, what's the Vader and Chan Valley Water System? How many homes are here, you know, four hundred, maybe, something like that. Yeah, so I mean, we're, we're talking seven hundred more residential units worth of hookups. More, probably more than.
Triple our population.
So that is not an issue right now.
I mean, that plant can actually, but more than just down.
At least with, with our, our, our situation, you know, I'm, I'm not an expert in this, but you know, we come out of the Cali River. It's, it's mostly a matter of paperwork to increase, you know, the amount of
Volume that you.
Volume, not necessarily a physical limitation with the amount of water and the amount of wells you have. Your reservoir and things like that.
And the size of pipes.
I know that they would have to do some expansion at the facility itself, you know, because there's only so much capacity.
To be able to process and.
Filter, filter and shoot the volume.
Are they still talking about, for instance, Tenth Street Pipe Main, are they still talking about redoing that one?
Last I heard, they that was part of the asbestos line project and that was not gonna be happening anymore.
Oh, it's not what would be happening anymore?
Right.
I wonder if they pump the brakes on that because we were asking that.
Because we're taking about the event.
Can we talk about that at the council meeting? Pretty sure I talked about that last year.
I might have missed that one. We could table that the next time we can put down.
Right, so they had done all the engineering work, they had all the survey work done for this multimillion dollar water line upgrade in the city. They were going to be going out for bid, construction documents were all done. And because when we started pursuing the extension agreement for the water system receivership, the county commissioners decided it was not in their interests to upgrade the Vader water system pipes. And so they pulled all the funding and they moved it to a bridge in Dodi.
Oh, what?
A bridge.
In Dodi?
In Dodi?
So if you go to a water district, which I went through back in the late sixties where it came from, they take over the sewer system too?
So again, it's all in the infant stages of discussion and I don't have all the details on it or any details. But I did, I did hear about that as well as, as sewer could be a, a part of that. I know the state is very concerned about water and water quality as a whole, so.
Because if you have city taking care of the sewer, you got bisters taking care of the water, you got somebody that's not paying their sewer, you can't turn the water on.
And, and, and that's the issue we have right now with the current situation with Lewis County running the water and Vader running the sewer.
They would not agree to that, so.
That's, that is an issue we have right now. Any other comments from anybody? All right. Do it, Rodney.
Be controlled sewer district. And take care of our link, do the backside, it's a contract of buildings. All the areas are too small and ugly water. And they do, and they, they have a citizen's inviting board with somebody else at council, just send them in. And they report back to all of them, you can like that. Some guy is saying, making sure it's all out of go here. Actually, you got less ability to work your return to yourself. They're gonna really, I've had my call, you can go to see it, and then get back to me. And when you do things like that, that's, in this area, the water is, a lot of places is bad. Too sulfur, the ground is too watery or clay. So that's one of the major issues around here, which would bend to everyone asking, you know, this. Winlock has a skating yard, sewer system. You know, they hook up lots of places. Our water system is better than most of them. We have, we have access to water. You know, it's just how you're gonna, because we're all gonna be eventually as we grow. And it's how it's best for people, you know, it's, because we're too small of communities, you know, to really get in there, you know. We've got left us a grand sympathy, guys. But, you know, we gotta start leaning toward each other from this time, you know, whole here, tub there. We're all gonna lose out. This is the biggest issue, it's the third project we've ever matched in all time. I mean, they can already do all this, Lewis, little shores, we got here, gosh, it's a lot to make, but.
Six fifty.
Yeah. Yeah, any of those big projects, they charge you, you bolt it, you go away, plus undersea expensive, which is anything man.
Sad part, if the city or if the state takes over the water, is they're gonna make it all taste like water in Olympia. Hard water here, I don't even use a filter. I love it.
Well, that's like before, they, they know the plant, we get good water, we have a really good system. You know, and it can be adapted easily and out of the first turn, you know, out to the freeway real quick, easy. Shoot up telegraph, you put in Winlock and all those roads, that's fantastic. I mean, it makes sense, if you understand that they're losing a lot of their initial basis. Control. And it is, it's pretty more fair to people, I mean, you know, if you like say, hey, I found my farm in development, stuff like that. These people over here, they answer it. It's fair, it's fair, they want to have a good choice. You can even take your audit complaints with the city. We're gonna hang out much more, more controlled than you back there. You know, I'm sorry, there's still a lot of benefits, but there's the X.
All right, this meeting is adjourned at six fifty-one. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.